Okay, let's call this Nelson Fiscal Court meeting to order October 16th. First order of business would be actually to call the Nelson County Public Improvement Corporation meeting to order. At this time, I'll call Matthew Ayers. Matthew's going to ask for a motion.
Yeah, fellas, there was just basically a typo. It says, if you look on your agenda, the county, it says Nelson County Public Properties Corporation meeting. It should actually be a meeting of the County of Nelson Public Improvements Corporation. And really, just to keep everything formal, I think what you need to do is have a motion to waive notice of that meeting being called, the meeting of the County of Nelson Public Improvement Corporation.
Motion in order. Derek Hahn, second. Bernard Ice, all approved?
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Now, we do have two, just so you know, we do have two public, two corporations that are set up on Secretary of State's whip. I just inadvertently put the wrong one. My bad. They're all the same because they're all us, just to be honest with you. At this time, we would ask for a fiscal court to approve the resolution that Matthew passed out. I'm going to read this. "A special meeting of the County of Nelson Public Improvement Corporation held on 16th day of October 2018. Principal Office Corporation, One Court Square, Section 4, Barksdale, Kentucky, with all directors being present. The final resolution was unanimously adopted, I hope. It resolved that Dean Weiss, in his capacity as Nelson County Judge Executive, is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to borrow $333,000 from Salt River Electric Co-op Corporation on terms more particularly described in turn note and loan agreement, and to pledge the corporation's real property more particularly described in D-Book 359, Page 732, as security for said loan. The proceeds of this loan shall be used to increase the public recreation, culture, and related facilities of the community through rehabilitation of the Jay Dan Top and Amphitheater property in Nelson County." You all have been aware of this for several months when we initiated the amphitheater project. Everybody was aware that we were going to process. Any questions on the resolution?
No.
Entertained a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion been made by Sam Hudson, second by Jeff Lear. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. This time, minority business on the Public Improvement Corporation. We will adjourn that meeting and move on to the fiscal court meeting. I think we got that right here on Matthew. Okay, the minutes, minutes from the October 2nd meeting?
Motion to approve this presented.
Motion has been made by Sam Hudson to approve the minutes, or seconds of the motion, second by Jerry. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be your bills list, additional bills list, and any transfers. If you have additional bills list, you'll notice some pretty good ticket items on the bills list. The pinnacle structures at Deceane Foster Story, that's the building, right?
Correct.
The frame of the building and so forth. It's being unloaded as we speak.
How big is the building, Brad? How many square foot are it?
Oh, God, you would have to ask.
Forty-seven by fifty-three, and I think it's like forty-two by forty-seven. Two buildings, one on each side.
Now, that's, we already put an $18,000 deposit down. This is the balance. Then you also have JBK Roofing on this part, the renovation is still ongoing because the rain just keeps killing us. Killing us. They've got the backside done, they're working on the bell tire now, and then they've got the other parts, too. They've got just a little bit left on the bell tire, I believe, Brad, don't they?
Correct.
Was they able to rebuild that bell tire, like, you know, take it down?
They took them off and took them to the shop and working on them, getting them back and put them back on.
Okay, so it's all going to work out okay?
The little, uh...
Checkered things.
Checkered things. I have not seen them since they were trying to rebuild. So, they were just toenail in up there, so. It had, it worked for some years.
Wouldn't have held up under any Michael, huh?
No.
Also on the bills list, road department, is the wind lawn culvert slide repair. Thirty-six thousand nine ninety-five. That's time to entertain a motion to approve the bills, additional bills and transfers.
Thank you, Matt. Should pay the bills and not transfers.
Motion been made by Bernard Ice, second by Jeff Lear. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be auction of the farm leases. Nelson Fiscal Court has a few pieces of property that we advertise every three years for, to rent to the farmers that's not being used by the county. We have a minimum bid on the Keating Farm, which is located adjacent to landfill, of $200. Anybody, I see my two farmers here. If I give $210. Two oh five? Two oh five. Two ten? Two ten? Two fifteen? Going once? Going twice?
Sixteen.
Two sixteen? Two twenty? Two twenty? Two twenty? Two twenty-five? Two twenty-one? Two twenty, going once? Two twenty, going twice? Two twenty-five? Two twenty-five? Two thirty? Two thirty? Two twenty-five? Two thirty? Two twenty-five, going two thirty? Two twenty-five, going once? Two thirty? Got two thirty, going two thirty-five? Two thirty, going two thirty-five? I'm not good at this. I got two thirty, going two thirty-five? Two thirty, two thirty-five? Two thirty, going once? Two thirty, going twice? So, Mr. Redd?
Homestead Farms.
Homestead Farms. Now, don't make this more hard than it ought to be. The next one is the property adjacent on this side of the landfill, the former Manningly Farm, forty-nine acres. How much is, Brad, was that cropped, any of them?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one of those cropped, the rest of it, whatever, cattle, whatever, we want to do whatever. Okay, we got a minimum bid on that, $40. Anybody get $45? What, we got $45? Anybody give $50? We got $50, $55. $55, $60. Got $60? $65? $65, $70? Anybody give $100? I got, I got $70? $75? $75, $80? $80? $85? $85, $90? Got $90? $95? Got $90? $90, going once? $90, going twice? So, first. Yes?
When you retire, don't try to get into that much work.
Save the taxpayer's money but not hiring an auctioneer. It worked.
Yeah? It worked really well?
So, what was the files on those? My mind's on a lot of subjects here today.
I got two thirty.
Two thirty and ninety. Two thirty and ninety. And two thirty was better than we thought it was going to get. Name person from our office, so three-year term? Three-year deal. We'll do the paperwork. Okay. Next would be amendment to the county clerk's budget. Elaine emailed you guys yesterday, I put you a hard copy in the mail. I looked in particular, looks like a new line item under handicap decals.
But the state changed the law so that we, the first one is free, first handicap is free, the second one is $10. Third one is $10. Everything passed the first one, so we had to add a new line item. And beyond that, the refunds on delinquent taxes, we never, you know, we're guests, we can make a good estimate, but they were much, we had a lot more, more interest, which generates more dollars that we, that we put in the bank, but if we have to refund it, it's a higher refund.
You gotta see the pluses and the minuses along the columns. In fact, that really helped, by the way.
Yeah, Gail.
Yeah, Gail did that.
So, she raised the pluses a little bit and minus the minuses a little bit, and added the new line item, so.
Any questions from magistrates on this, otherwise?
One question. I wonder why they raised that on the handicap?
The handicap, the state was losing a ton of money. You know, once they gave away those things by law, they had to, they got into a lawsuit with the Civil Liberty Union, I believe, and everybody wanted two. We were, two was the max that we could hand out for a person, but the state said they were pushing out, they've done the figures on those from, you know, a few thousand a year to hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands.
I mean, you know, to me, it's our less fortunate group, and then...
Well, the problem is that it's not just the less fortunate that are using those things, and there's a huge issue with that. And a gentleman who worked for Transportation Cabinet suggested that the county clerk shouldn't be assigning for those. Well, you know, there are, there are times when a person walks into our office and it's pretty obvious that they need those stickers, and we're going to send them to a doctor who charges a lot of times to sign that form when we can take care of them. So, part of this is geared towards stopping some of the abuse of those things.
The abuse, yeah. Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the amendment to county clerk's budget? Motion by Jeff, second by Jerry. Right, Jerry? Right. Okay. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be an amended lease agreement for the amphitheater project. That amendment is primarily working, working toward the goal of the county getting $125,000 for the next two years from the state. So, $125 plus $125. Two fifty over a two-year period.
Out of two to one.
Yeah. The term is pretty, everything we could live with in there, if we need, I think Senator Higginson and Chad McCoy for their support in that, as well the governor, the governor's office on that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease between the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the Nelson County.
An amended?
Yeah. Amended lease.
Motion been made by Sam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bernard Ice. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved? Motion will carry. Thank you all. Next would be the Heaven Hill Distillery Distribution Center Bond Ordinance and Pilot Agreement to the schools. You guys remember, I'm sure you do, two years ago, we did an inducement resolution authorizing Heaven Hill to move forward with the building of a new distribution center. The distribution center sets, is in operation now, and it was a $29 million, $29 million bond issue, and when it comes to finalization, then Heaven Hill has to submit that to the state of Kentucky, the paperwork process. We have to do an ordinance on first reading, then we'll do a second reading. Anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve on first reading, and twice per second. Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second? Second by Sam Hudson. Further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapproved?
We would need to do the pilot agreement as well.
Jeff, do we do the pilot agreement separate?
I guess the pilot is part of this.
It was part, pilot is just part of the ordinance. It's, I didn't think of that.
Now, when are we going to have to announce that for a second?
Okay. Our meeting schedule, November the 7th, right, Elaine?
Yes.
November 7th. You said you were going to make a pick. I got a couple emails back from you guys, but I didn't get everybody's response by the day after the election.
Yes.
And Ron and I both decided, when you have so much business, we really need to keep it moving, to keep the flow good, instead of waiting, because we could have technically canceled the first. So, November the 7th. Road Department report. Okay, so we have finished asphalt patching for the year. We cleaned the favor up, cut it away, because we had to get on over to chip sealing. Don't get me wrong, there's still patches out there that need to be done, we just can't get to all of them. You gotta eventually cut ties and move forward. Jerry, we're hoping to finish up on Waldrich and Drake over the next day or two. We got Shields Lane we gotta get as well, and we're going to, we prepped, oh, what's the name of that road in your district? You talking about Jerry's district? No. No, it's in Case. Not Perm, no. We prepped Pascal Valley. We prepped the hill on it because we kept having issues with the hill. Right, we put a patch on it, but when we leave out Hills District, we gotta get that done, and then we got some for Burnet we had to get done, and that'll be about all we'll be able to get chip sealing with the weather. We had a couple, we had one crew we had bust down basically to haul out this concrete and rock. At the amphitheater, we gave John a lot of that, who helped him with his cover material out up the landfill. Berman Wells, we fixed a ditch back there that was eroding into the road. Timber Creek and Murphy Lane, we put up some Gabby and Bassett, same thing, creeks are eating into the road, that's a good fix for that, to be honest with you. Bernard Allen Road, next week is when we're scheduled to cut that in, that's when it's going to come. We're sending out information. He has a 60-inch culvert that is failing, and there's no way in, no way out, once we cut it. We're going to try to let traffic get to school, get to work, start that day, get at least back before the school buses come back. We're sending letters out to everybody, and we'll let the emergency management folks know. So, bush hogging, we're in District 1, we will move to District 3. We're going to slow down a little bit, we had an issue with the tractor yesterday. We think maybe a ring broke in the engine. We don't know yet, so.
How many hours does that take?
Oh, I don't know, Sam, $10,000 probably.
Twelve years old.
Twelve, yeah. So, is that a hint for next year's budget cycle?
I'd say about. I'd say the 12-year.
I think our needs exceed our means some days. We're going to fix it. It's no good right now the way it is, so. Probably, once we get through District 3, you know, we would be going to District 4, we will see what time of year it is and how it's growing. And last year, we quit at the beginning of November, was when we stopped mowing, so we're right on that timeframe of grass just stops mowing. And what I like at that time of year is to take those guys and put them on boom mower, because we just don't have the personnel to run that boom mower all the time, especially when we're chip sealing pavement. We get tons of phone calls from you guys, and they're all right. How many, how many people that take the boom mower? Two? One to flag and one to run the tractor? That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, because you have a little frac, flying debris, you gotta hold the traffic and make sure it doesn't pass like that. If it's a real bad road, we'll put another flagger at the front, but most of the time we just send two. Most of our roads were on. So, anyway, and then we ordered 250 tons of salt. My guys think they can take that, uh, grade off and push. And push and push. Dean was down there the other day, and he said he wants it coming out the front, so we're going to push as high as we can and get what we can to be ready for it. I ordered it yesterday. Moss Brown, we went up yesterday, we're going to finish up today on that. We had a little road slide on Moss Brown, and we're trying to fix that while we're up there, and then we'll put some rock on that road. It got bad. Then Woodlawn Road, these are just pictures, Sam assumed, you know, that's a pretty big project that we did, it turned out fairly well. It's a replacement of a very large culvert in the field, and it's about 30 foot deep in the ground. And those are, the first page is just basically pictures of where we started, and then as we worked through the project, and once you ended up with the final product. We have not paved that yet, Sam, that'll be one of the ones we chip seal before we stop that for the year. And that's it. Yes, we got one of those. I've got Kermit Clark. We have, county's got an ordinance where all, all the county roads are posted at 35 miles an hour on the county roads and 25 in the subdivisions. And if we go something different than that, it takes an approval from fiscal court to change a road from a one-speed limit to the other. There's a lot of times, we've got a few of these over the years, there's a dead end road called Kermit Clark Road, that is basically a real short road, and we want to lower the speed limit on that at magistrate's request to 25 miles an hour. I'd like fiscal court to approve that and authorize court to put up a sign saying 25 miles per hour. I'll sell make that motion. Motion been made by Keith Metcalf, is there a second? Who I likes, Keith? Second by Sam. All approve, say aye. Disapproved? The motion carry. Permit Clark. Okay, landfill solid waste report.
You got any schedule from Magel about when they're going to shut down the asphalt plan, or?
Typically, it's mid-November, that is, they're solely dependent upon what the weather's going to do. You know, right now, they're out on 49. They claim by the end of this week, they're hoping to be done with 49, and then they're going to move out to the Loyable Road section where they're working on that bridge, if Loyable Road section is done at that point in time. And then they've got some paving on 245 they need to do, and then we've got... I'm asking specifically, is there going to be an Nazareth Drive? We've got... Yeah, we've got, oh my goodness, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. I got 13 roads still hanging out there. Some of them I haven't issued POs on, based on, I don't want them paving it in too cold weather. Nazareth has been issued, Hilton Lane has been issued. And just reminding, Ron and I have to remind everybody that we have a election year, we have a rule, that you can, if you have a 65/35, you can spend no more than 65% of your total budgeted money in an election year cycle through the first half of the year, of the fiscal year.
I don't count for pastors, is that correct?
It's pastors.
If you have a pastor, no.
Total budget. Total budget.
Other than debt.
Total budget.
But Ron and I have been keeping a...
And we're playing it safe, too, a little bit. All of a sudden, I was saying, I know what you're driving, mid-November. It's all late November, depending on, they can do it 40 and rising, that's the rule of thumb, 40 degrees and rising, they're going to face it. Now, we as a group have to decide if that's what we want, I know.
Yes, I called that before, if you would, because like I said, if it's damp, I just seem like the manager. I do not. I wouldn't do my own driveway, so I don't get it.
There are not any in Fall Park, we passed a couple of them, just pulled them over. Landfill solid waste.
We got our aerator motor and our aeration basin replaced last week, so that's be up and running this week. The archeological review of the borrow area for the landfill expansion, they'll start in two weeks. I know we talked about it months ago, but the corn was up, so they got a corn combine, so we'll start that in two weeks. Other than that, just normal operations.
Okay, thank you. You got something else there? No. Road side cleanup line in the county, did not advertise that too loudly, we have new staff helping us with this, he was helping us with it, but we have had good participation so far. It will go to the 29th of October. EMS report, Joe?
Have your monthly report for September in your packet. For September, we have 507 calls responded to, out of that 123 were non-transport, have a total number of, for the first three months, of 1,712 calls responded to. On emergency management side, last Thursday, we received notes that we were approved on our application for another new weather siren replacement, tentatively that weather siren will go in the Fairfield area, so that gives us new replaced sirens in all the Northeast End, Chaplain, Lukeville, and Fairfield. We completed also last, early last week, the addition of a weather siren in the Nazareth complex. This is a solar panel charged weather siren, which was kind of a tricky deal for me, not having to do that before, but we figured it out, and if you get out there, it's behind the guard shack, it turned out real well.
Good. Thank you for the efforts here. Okay? Just a minute. How's the ambulance file turning out?
Well, you know, ambulances are run hard like police cars, and we've been dealing with the Chevrolets, we thought Ford's had a problem a few years ago. Chevrolets using depth wood have turned out to be quite, quite trying process, too. We have one that's probably spent more time with Chevrolet dealership than it's been on the road with going in depth wood, air, and going in slow speeds, so, you know, it is what it is, we deal with it, and try to keep on moving.
I haven't heard you complain lately too much.
Well, we're trying to deal with it.
Good, thank you for that. So, what you should do is put in for a new one.
That'll be coming, yeah, first of...
Jerry, now, you're, you're leaving around the first of the year. I don't care, hey, I don't care, Judge. Listen, if you need an ambulance, I've done you them three times, and if they got one, it's not running, and broke down, and wobbling all over the road, they had, they took me to E-Town, and one, it was all over the road, and wobbling and everything. Hold on, Jerry. I'm telling you. It must've been the driver. No, they need, they need a new one. You know, it's a passion. Right, and you go, and you go, Bernard, I'm agree with you. We'll move on, Jerry, okay? I'll come back, Lee. Okay, let's go to jail report, Dorpkins.
Okay, this morning, we have a total of 162 inmates, we have two on home incarceration, we have 46 state inmates, we have one serving weekend, we have three that's out to court in May County, so we have an in-house total of 156. September, a daily average on controlled intake, or it was 29 a day, class D's, we averaged 28 a day, Nelson County inmates, we averaged 103 a day. So, our total for September was 161, we averaged 161 a day. New releases for September, the arrivals for males was 209, these are just new ones. Females was 66, so it's a total of 275 releases. We released 196 males, 65 females, for a total of 261 that was released. District court, we have 24 that's waiting for court, we have five that's been, already been sentenced. And then controlled intake, we have 29, class D's, we have 17. On blood release, we have three state inmates that go to work. So, in circuit court, we have 78 that's waiting for court, and then we have a total of 102 that has not been sentenced. And we also had our last jail inspection, we had, we had these all strapped home. And he tried to find all the inmates that were probably all were through those prisons already. So, we're aware of it.
Thank you, Dorpkins.
I have a solution.
Bright's Recreation Report. For the sports, foul baseball is now over, soccer's still going on, football's still going on as well, and they'll be done here in the next few weeks. Girls' basketball is on Week 3, and then I'm meeting with the boys' basketball October 25th to discuss that season. For the park, you know, cut down some dead trees, and other than that, just been regular park maintenance, nothing extremely big out there, so.
Thank you. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, our next court meeting would be considered a special meeting, even though typically it would have been a regular meeting, November the 7th, the day after the election. We'll send out reminders on that to everyone. Last court meeting, a couple of the magistrates had asked for a little more explanation on the syringe exchange program, we call Harm Reduction Syringe Exchange Program. I invited Sarah Jo and her team, Tammy, and the girls, why don't y'all just bring the whole staff with you? I work very closely with these folks, so with the last, especially the last seven, eight years, when I'm chairing the board and enjoy working these professionals, I'll tell you, these girls are professionals. And Sarah Jo, you want to kind of review, or I don't know, who's, who's going to take the lead?
Sure, I have a...
I made copies for the magistrates of the passouts that you had on your slide presentation at our board meeting.
Okay. I just, yeah, I have one page.
You can come, you can come up here if you want to, we can, I can clear Brandon and John to the back if you had to.
I just did a one-page summary. This is one year, and so I would just caution, anytime we look at trends and analysis of[1779.31] we look at trends and analysis of data, one year's not much. It also was our first year, so we had never done a program like this. We're relatively new in Kentucky, period. So that, they've only been occurring over the past three to five years in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, but this was our first year ever doing this program. And so anytime we try something new, there's always lessons to be learned and quality improvement to be done. And so that's why we did track this type of data to see. We had a total of 96 participants, unduplicated, that took advantage of the syringe exchange program. And I always feel like I need to start out with syringe exchange because I think that the intent of the program is really what we need to focus on, which is controlling disease, communicable disease within your community. This is not a program that takes away drug abuse in the community. It's admitting that you have drug abuse in the community and what you're gonna do about it to control the disease process. So injection drug users are very highly likely, if they share needles, to contract hepatitis C and HIV. And so the intent of our program is to try to control that. So under successes, I feel like that even though it's only one year worth of data, it's showing that we're doing that. So 34% of our participants were tested for hepatitis C and HIV. That is voluntary. They do not have to do that. That tends to go up over time. Again, your first year, you'd have to build trust with a very unique population. And so the participation tends to increase over time as that trust builds, and the services that they take advantage of at the syringe exchange also tends to increase over time as that trust is built up. Of those that were tested, 26% were tested more than once, and 82% of those tested remained negative for hepatitis C. 97% of them remained negative for HIV. So those are very good indications to us that we're doing what we were challenged to do in preventing the spread of HIV and hepatitis C within that population. That also affects total population, so when we have HIV and hepatitis C in our community, it does not just affect that population, it affects all of us. The other thing I would say is 26% of those that participated, we took education regarding various things. We do education from self-care to keep them out of the emergency rooms, to help decrease costs, to social service referral, maybe housing, basic needs. 5% were referred into treatment. That pretty much is the standard, and one of the things that's kind of the cherry on top for a program like this, we distributed 602 condoms. We were able to give 13 hepatitis A vaccinations. 6% of them were referred into our clinic for other services, and 15% met with a certified drug and alcohol counselor. So...
What was that percent, Sarah Joe?
15%. So our first year, what did we learn? What would we do different? We feel like we didn't do as good of a job as we could in promoting the availability of the syringe exchange here. We did learn very quickly that one day a week was not enough, and that we needed to be more accessible, so we made that change as we went. But we are working on how to reach our population and let them know that these services are available to them. One of the barriers to HIV and Hep C testing was the amount of time it took, and so we've changed our testing methodology to where we can do a 90-second result now. So that should increase testing because that's the population that wants in and out. They don't wanna hang around for a long time. So we're trying to meet that need. And we also want to expand NARCAN training within our community and take that out to the public, so that those that are concerned and want to be an administrator in NARCAN would know how to do that, so that maybe we can save some lives within the community. So one of the questions, I think, that was brought up that I tried to address on the handout is, it's not a one-for-one syringe exchange, which means that we are not at the ratio for every syringe we give out, we're collecting one. And I will tell you that the first year that anybody does this program, it's typically their worst year. And there are many reasons for that. Just right off the bat, if you think mathematically, 96 participants came into us for the very first time. And most of those individuals come into us with nothing on hand. They're testing us out. They're seeing if we're trustworthy, if it's a safe place for them to seek services. And so nine times out of 10, they're not gonna have anything with them. We do not turn them away because we're trying to get them into our program. We're trying to develop that relationship, and we're trying to offer them that assistance. So there were 96 opportunities for individuals to show up with nothing. Of the 96, I think it's around 43, I think, came back. So the rest of them, we never saw again. So we saw them, we provided services to them, and then they did not return. There's many reasons why they don't return. Some of them will participate in other exchanges. So they are given a sharps container so they can safely dispose of those syringes, irregardless of whether they bring them back to us or not. So we feel like the safety of the disposal is still there by providing that. But they may, we can monitor Louisville Metro syringe exchange, and we do see Nelson County ZipCo come up a lot there, so they could have turned them in there. They have maybe had been arrested. They may have been confiscated. They may have moved. They may have gone into treatment, or they may be deceased. So they are, we tend to see a lot of movement in our clients in that program, and so they may not be here anymore. So that's just a summary of where we are now. The other thing that we did, just to see how we were doing and what we projected, where we might improve next year, is we looked at other health departments that had been on operation longer than a year, and tried to use their data to see if we projected where we would be, what would we look at, look like. And Ashland Boyd County was one that looked very similar to us. So year one, 36% of the syringes we gave out, we collected back. Their first year, they were at 41%. Year two, they jumped up to 79%. And it's pretty common among the syringe exchanges to increase that next year. I think it's part of the growth.
What kind was that, Sarah Joe? Boyd?
Ashland Boyd.
Oh, Ashland, yeah.
The other thing I looked at was participating. So for us, at year one, we were at 96. Ashland Boyd was 147. At year two, they went to 356. Clay Jackson County was at 139. Their first year, their second year, they went to 313. And then Louisville Metro, I have their data, but they're so big that it's hard to compare us to them. But you can see that the growth usually about doubles that second year. So this is pretty typical for any of the health department programs that we do, really.
I want to first commend you and your staff for the excellent job of a new project, basically, for our district. You've done a great job. I want to thank this reporter for, you know, we're county in our district that took the initiative and put this on the table, and we're trying to encourage some of our other captain judges around us to do likewise. Haven't gotten a bite on that yet.
Not yet, but I haven't given them...
I'm working on it.
We'll keep on.
But the positive side is, you keep the diseases, you know, families dealing with addictions are already dealing with a major issue within their families already. And then you couple that, or throw on top of that, a HIV or hepatitis problem on top of that, that just compounds their lives. So I think you've done a great job. I appreciate you. And the whole staff.
The staff.
The staff.
Of the 15% that met with the council, do you see that increase in any as from when it first began? Is it working itself up, too?
I think that, generally speaking, when you look at stages of change that people go through, we meet them where they are. But typically, they progress through that over time and, again, building that trusting relationship. But people may come in, it depends on where they are. If they're not even contemplating changing, you know, there's nothing wrong with what they're doing, they're not ready for that. But typically, what you see is people will progress through that. They'll get exhausted, they'll get tired, and then they'll be ready for that. And our job is to have the resources available to connect the two.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, how many ways can you catch a toxic second? You can't just catch it with the needle, right? You can catch it sharing a straw.
Blood body.
Blood body. So if they had a nosebleed and they used a straw, then they could give it to the girlfriend or the boyfriend.
You mean if they're using a straw for drug use?
Yeah. Because I know a little girl told me that, and I was, well, why didn't you go get a, we got the needle exchange, you know, it just blew me away. She said that they used a straw.
A lot of times, you'll see that it can be actually shared, not just through the needle, but through the cotton, where they're injecting drugs through the cotton. It can be shared if they're sharing cotton.
And she told me she's gotta watch using her finger and her clippers at home. She's gotta use a certain set, as the family members.
It is recommended to not use people's personal hair iron on sweaters. Hair clippers, nail clippers.
Right. They're already dealing with a lot of issues. They just don't need that disease coupled on top of it.
Thank you for encouraging our case.
Yeah, yeah.
I just had a question. So there was no increase in disease among the retested clients. How about the overall population? Did you see a decrease, staying the same, in Hep C and HIV?
For our district?
I don't know if we have that data for that time period from the Kentucky Department of Public Health yet. Unfortunately, our statewide data and disease data...
Two, three years ago.
Yeah, it's usually about two to three years. So I don't know that I can give you apples to apples. I don't think I have the data available to me for this same time period to look at just Nelson County or Kentucky. It's a quality improvement project for the state, really.
I do think that most of what we reported early are hep A, right?
We see a lot.
It was concentrated to the jails. Concentrated in Hard County and Nelson County, too.
The number one risk factor for hepatitis A in our outbreak was illicit drug use. The number two risk factor was a history of homelessness. But about 23% of the population had no risk factors at all, which demonstrates how the general population is affected by what happens in that sub-community. But yeah, I wish I had real-time data like that, but I don't. Generally speaking, I can say that hepatitis C in the Commonwealth of Kentucky has been going up. We tend to be a leader in the nation for cases when you're looking at our total population. But that data's a little bit old, but it's the best that we have.
And Sarah Joe, I think Nelson County moved up in the statewide overall ranking in a healthier community.
Uh-huh, yes, in the health rankings.
Went up to 20?
The number...
18 or 20, maybe, out of 120 counties?
Yeah.
Is that...
The majority of our counties rank in the top 20, so we do pretty good there.
Very good.
That's a question here. You had 34% of participants were tested, 26% retested, and you didn't see any increase in disease. Well, you're talking about separate people, right? It's not very significant.
That one year worth of data.
Yeah, that's what you're basically saying.
What's, why won't they get retested? Do they not feel the need to, or?
They may not return to the...
Yeah, they may not retire, but Tammy works in that program and can probably provide testimony on what really...
I mean, they just don't feel the need. They've been tested somewhere else already.
And I think, I think in the future, you'll, we'll be back a couple of years from now, you'll get a little bit better snapshot of what...
Yeah, I do, too. I think it's just, but we said when we passed this, that we would provide an annual update so that you can see what we were doing. And we also do this to see where we need to improve. So one of the reasons why they may not get tested, too, which is why we switched to the test, is what was the turnaround time? At least 30 minutes, right? That they were gonna have to sit there and wait if they were tested. And that's why we've moved to that rapid test, 90 seconds, and you have your results. So that was a barrier that we identified doing this.
Are you seeing an increase in the people who are retesting as the year goes? I mean, I know initially, it probably has some reluctance, but...
Yes, as you gain their trust and, you know, they come in, they share stories, and they'll start feeling really comfortable. And I think at that point, you can pretty much talk them into anything. And then they'll just talk them into getting their hepatitis A shots.
Quick, come here.
More testing.
I think it's been well worth the investment in myself and the community. Any tool you can use to help treat this, to me, is a good thing.
Thank you all so much. Got any questions? No, but thank each and every one of y'all. I know that you're into something different that you've never been in, and I want to thank you for, like I say, you gotta earn that trust. What about my little buddy that gave us a talk at our last district board meeting, epidemiologist?
Oh.
I thought you were gonna bring her in.
Oh, Lindsay.
This girl, at 8 o'clock at night, I mean, that's how enthusiastic some of these girls are about their job. 8 o'clock at night, she went on for half an hour, 45 minutes, and she was still enthused about her job. That's exciting to see.
She's going back to school to get her doctorate in public health, and so she's...
She's young.
It was exciting to see, though. It really was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, our district board meetings, they do feed us. Any other old business for you guys? Here, Mr. Don Thatcher wants to address the board meeting. He said he wanted to address the court.
Yeah, I just want to get up and say, November 7th, it's not gonna be the day after the election, it's also gonna be the one year to the day of when I first came. A lot of you are gonna remember, the first day I came to this fiscal court was November 7th, 2017, when I came to talk about a road name and democracy. Well, I've been through a lot since then. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I know recently, there was an opinion piece on an internet blog about me having, talking about corruption, saying everybody's corrupt and underpaid. But the thing is, I guess the nature of journalism is, they don't ask candidates what's right about government. They, and maybe candidates, you know, only stick to what's wrong, too, because it's, and that's just the nature of being a candidate. But there's a lot of right, there's a lot of things that are right about county government. I guess I'd take up too much time if I talked about everything that was right. But just want to remind the people that the founders of our country, they gave us rights and freedoms, but they also gave us a duty. And the duty is to stand up when we feel something's wrong, and to stand up for what we think is right. Because if we don't do it, then those rights and our freedoms, they disappear. So one of the things I want to thank you guys for is, you know, when you turned over your emails and your texts, there was nothing personal towards me. There was nothing that you said that was bad or, you know, mean-spirited towards me, and I appreciate that. Because none of this has ever been personal to me. This is about thoughts, ideas, and principles. So I just wanted to thank you for that because I appreciate it. And, you know, one thing I want to say is, the next time somebody, whether I come, you know, after November 7th, you know, depends on whether or not, how often I come back, you know, if I don't, if I'm not here, just remember that the next person that gets up and talks before you guys, whoever may be here on January 1st on this fiscal court, whoever gets up and takes time out of their day to come here and speak before you guys, just make sure you give them a little bit extra time, a little bit extra thought when they're talking, because you never know when that person is gonna be, you know, talking about a road name in a small matter. You guys might think it's a small matter, but if you listen to them, really listen to them, and think to yourself, this person might be, you know, run against me if I don't give them consideration, or this person might be, if you treat that person like they're your deciding vote in your election, if you do that, that is when we, as a county, will have a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. But I do thank you for, over this past year, because, you know, I think we've made changes, and I appreciate it.
Anybody else want to address the court? Otherwise, entertain the motion to adjourn. First motion by Bernard Rice, second by Jeff Lear. All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion carried.